I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, you want to do a presentation?
Sure.
We'll start with you.
Thanks for letting me go ahead. You only need to go ahead if you're in the seventh grade or earlier, or if you have an exam tomorrow. You have to study. But thanks for getting on the agenda. I just wanted to introduce a program I talked to Steve about several months ago, after meeting with Jane Samuelson and the Girl Scouts, and also Mark Rogan from Troop Thirty-One, the Boy Scout troop. And in the short time I've been in the museum, I learned an awful lot about how difficult it is to charge and to reach back into the past, and capture it, and archive it, and organize it, try to promote as much as you can. But at the same time, challenge is really what's happening today, and I mean today. In a month or two that go by, every month I find out this, you know, there's something changing, whether it's a building, a person, an event, a program. When people get into the museum, they're fascinated by, you know, the menu at a restaurant from fifty years ago, and the same question is kind of, who is there? Do you know that person? Or I read them at this city, who ran that store, that bakery, or that restaurant. So the real challenge was trying to get, a couple of things happened. So I talked to Jane, I talked to Mark Rogan, they helped me develop what we pretty much call the historian of the month. Part of it's community service, part of it's social studies, education, information. But just taking one month with a volunteer, they're selected by the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, right now we're still talking, they're sitting open in the God Central Social Studies class up there. And to take a checklist and to walk down between the government, minutes of an agenda, newsletters, church bulletins, maybe events that maybe buddies working on in the village, or could be sidewalk paving, anything that's just happening, just capturing that happening in a quick picture, scan information, and so the questions would come to all of you trustee, we do it on the back, you know, this is where the market, call the trustee, call the DPW, talk to Bruce, talk to the fire chief, reach out to Steve at his department, pretty much a monthly, is the main point, where we sort of capture a lot here, but just sort of say, what's going on this month, anything new, anything happening, anything you're working on, any events that you want to record for history. So just think about it, fifty years from now, Charlotte would be the historian, because I'll just be getting out, that's the track record so far. But Sarah will be the historian, and someone coming to the museum and saying, hey, who was that person? Who was that store? Who was that front room? What did that change? What used to be here? Who is that person? Where is this venue? And they'll be fascinated to death. So do all the competitors, read them, nothing I want to make, this is a work in progress. The best way to say that is that Jane is my dear friend, is also helping me, Jane Samuelson has helped me, the Texas, my country's involved in multi activities, and I'm involved, which is a divorce here, but I'm the PowerPoint guy, and they've introduced me to computers, disk scanning, why do you have a floppy, what's a dome charge? You don't know where, but you can reach me mostly. We're excited about moving this over every single month, until we really develop. At the end of the month, what we'll do is Steve and I will sit down with all the documents collected by the historian of the month, and we'll actually sign off on all the materials, and then I'll catalog down on the shelf, this will be the first one, October two thousand nineteen. So hopefully I'll end up with a whole library someday, I'll look back, and today will be history. So I'd like to start out by Steve, you're swearing the first and second of the month. Sarah Samuelson is in the seventh grade.
Did you get the book?
Troop Thirty-One.
Yeah, I would be honored to do so.
Sarah, come on up. Monty, come on up. Sarah, come on up. Mom Delano, come up. Your mom doesn't want to fall.
He's gonna make it go on.
Monty's history, someday, look at this picture.
Congratulations, Sarah. You see you're involved in a lot of things in the community. Is it the Girl Scouts or the, Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts, yeah.
Girl Scouts at the concerts.
And Troop Thirty-One, we also have.
Your mother's involved in a lot, and the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, so congratulations.
Raise your right hand.
That's right.
Sarah, okay. I, Sarah Samuelson.
I, Sarah Samuelson.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of historian of the month according to the best of my ability.
I will officially discharge the duties as historian of the month according to the best of my ability.
Okay. All right.
So Steve, you got everything.
Yeah, for me like Brian, you have to speak up a little bit, a little bit louder. You're the first historian of the month that we've had with the ink trucks.
Do you have time?
For history lessons.
The train could all be there, so someday. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
So Brian, you gonna expand on this?
Sarah, I need you to sign.
This document, it's a moving document, and now I'll just say, each group, like Jane's gonna work on it with me, Mark Rogan, the high school students, so we hope to be bound, printed, and really on a disc, and what they envision for me is everything will be in a cloud, our history will be in a cloud, wherever that is, but they told me it's safe.
Good. And what are Sarah's duties gonna be over the next month?
What happens in the next month, she'll be reaching out to everybody on the list in the back, in the document here, but she'll stop and she'll, she really wants, she'll take some time on her own too, to take pictures of maybe, you know, like a building that's vacated, or someone who just left, interview someone that's leaving, and a good example of that is somebody who just moved in. And part of it is, I'll give you a great example, you know, I interviewed, I interviewed Jim James first, and the second interview I did was with Randy Carroll, because, you know, where did you start, where did you do, you know, where did you begin, how did you get there? So we want to try and keep these, you know, the present, you know, documented, so we don't have to wait and say, go, we look back to the past. She'll be, she'll be working pretty much, planning Union Streets, looking at things that are changing, Lower Clinton, some of the building changes that are, you know, construction, City Wires is probably the basic example right now. We had to try to get Michael Dorff to the table and sit down with him, you know, in the present, all in the present, while we're working on the best, and we're building it, you know, we're building it too.
Very good stuff. When is that timed capsule? When did they, where did that timed capsule?
No, no, someone just mentioned.
It might have been at the hundred and, or the two hundreds.
I didn't like it.
Nineteen ten, I mean two thousand and ten, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think that's when it was, right?
You know, we found, we found, we found one poster from the American Legion from the car racing, the original poster, you know, promoting the car races from Pepsi Cola and NASCAR, it's an incredible piece. Like today, you know, we'll take a car show, a Jimmy Star, we'll take a lot of that stuff, and you know, we gotta make sure we pick it all up the windows and put it in a file, and that's what Sarah and all the historian of the month have been doing. You know, like I said, they might take a menu of a restaurant today, in the building, just put it in a box and sheet it. Because that's some of the stuff people look at, prices, real estate prices, the homes.
Good stuff to have, keeping history alive.
Yeah, so pretty excited about it.
Thanks again, thanks Jane also, for all you did for the community.
Thank you all.
Brian, before you, Mike, can we go a little out of town?
With the car show?
How the car show, how we did on the car show, I mean?
Car show, we ran, I mean, the car show was incredible, we've averaged eighty-nine, one-hundred, one-twenty, one-twenty-five, this was one-sixty-five, matter of fact, Buddy helped me count, we counted right to the car, one-hundred-and-sixty-five cars, we took the space from, we tried to drive, we put them in a drive, and we literally ran out of spots. And so we're gonna try to look to expand it, you know, that thing really took off this trip. I just turned up, and I think somewhere between the DARE program, the raffle, and the profits from the car show, we'll probably, I talked to Dave Griffith today, somewhere, I'd use nine-hundred dollars as a good example, what we've contributed to the DARE program, after all expenses.
Perfect.
Which is just posted, we zero it out, and then the rest goes to DARE.
And as a, as a joke, we made a motion about a month ago to have a nice Sunday within the eighties and all that stuff, and it all passed, and it was a nice Sunday in the eighties.
A lot of adventure, Taste of Montgomery.
Sorry, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, for the Taste of Montgomery.
Taste of Montgomery's coming, Montgomery twenty, yeah, I think that's a much better choice personally, the fall, the fall always, summer's just too hot for everybody.
And then the eighteens, the friends at the library at the museum, and we just added one yesterday, Chuck the Rocker, I confirm, I'll be working on that flyer, poster, we're gonna do a Civil War campaign Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from one to four outside in the yard. So that's, that'll be the last.
When is that?
October twenty-sixth, the week after, I mean, Tuesday. And she was an incredible Civil War.
Great. Car show, thanks Stephen, like, your volunteers. I like you, you take credit too.
It's a great thing. We're gonna have time for me Thursday, I did, and just do a wrap up on it.
Excellent.
History you're making, right here. Everybody thinks fifty years from now.
Thanks, Brian. Couple of quick things, and then we'll go to David Church to give us a presentation on traffic. Traffic study, okay. Motion approved, minutes to September seventeenth?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. Abstract number nine of two thousand and nineteen, motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. No questions within the vote.
No.
All right. David, you want to give us an update on the traffic and transportation analysis? We got your email, tell us, and obviously we might be able to pursue, but you want to come up, you want to stand, or you want to see?
That's fine, no problem.
David Church, Commissioner of Planning, County of Orange.
Well, you're stuck with me tonight.
That's okay.
I tried to delegate to my senior planner, Fred Buddy, but he's out sick, so we do have a transportation unit. So as a little background, I've been talking to Mayor off and on about the emerging, are the traffic problems or not, what could we do about it? So the county, my department, we, there's a transportation council, it's staffed by my department, it's an obligation to receive federal and state aid, which we program, as we call it, through the planning department. Annually, we get millions of dollars in aid, most of it, of course, goes to physical improvements, bridge work, construction improvements, things like that, up for the local roads. Work that's done on federal or state roads is processed right through the state DOT. But there's a group, it's a, it's actually an unusual arrangement, but there's a transportation council chaired by the county executive, with a rotating representation from municipalities. So there's, you divide the county up into three sub-areas. They each can send two designated town representatives, be voting members of transportation council. The villages have two seats amongst themselves, which is something out of the year, we, they want to talk about Montgomery wanting to have a vote on that council. And then the three cities have permanent seats and votes, as does New York State DOT, the New York Thruway Authority, the MTA, and others. And they are responsible for programming local money. So that's the primary function my department provides, is how to use that money wisely. As such, we have expertise on staff, and Steve and I have been talking about how to use that expertise. There's a couple of opportunities. What we've seen is, before, whatever, you know, the recession, the housing bubble, it was like we were, county was semi-overwhelmed by housing development, and then that in the hots, if we call it that, that was certainly true to some degree in Montgomery, definitely true south of here, southeast of here in particular, particularly the south, and both east and west. Then we had, whatever you want to call, oh-eight, oh-nine, and the market kind of collapsed. We're now seeing very little residential development, with notable exception, south and east of here again, and a particularly unique place in our area. We've had this sudden boom of commercial development, it's rather surprising and a bit unprecedented compared to even the odds for the residential development. That's raised, and it's not unusual, happens everywhere I've worked, you know, I had a private career before coming to the county, I've worked in multiple states, and traffic is often a big concern of people, I find second most is often water, but water doesn't seem to be a particular problem here, at least yet, drinking water. But those are the two kind of resonating issues from when development happens, that, and so we're talking traffic, if we can call it that, or transportation needs. There's a couple of things the county can offer, I can take some questions, we did some preliminary work, research, of course, we've been commenting on the environmental review and the documentation submitted for various projects. Montgomery's really Greater Montgomery, I'll call it, for lack of a better term, which is much larger than the village itself, really seeing a boom of activity. I'm not judging that as good or bad, it's not my job to do, it's just a fact.
It's concerning.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a fact to me that it's happening, yeah.
What we kind of want to drill down on is the, is the traffic impact from the, let's say the large warehouses.
Sure.
We have one, one east of us and one south of us, so to speak, and large, and one proposed in the village, Kevin's here, that's, I believe, two-hundred-thousand square feet, Kevin, what the one in the village proposed?
There's two buildings.
Ninety-thousand.
Ninety-thousand square foot building, and the two-one-thousand square foot building. And that's two office buildings.
That's concerned with the immediate traffic. So I, I don't know, there have been questions of us of how we can control traffic, and state highways were very limited, so I don't know, I mean, we're kind of laid out of the gate here to, I mean, we could, you know, we'd like to entertain a traffic study, and at what cost, I don't know, but maybe we could get quotes, and you could help us in what regard, what we can do to try to, you know, we've got a question and answer session with Medline, they assure us that a lot of their major trucks aren't going to come through the village, but let's face it, some of the delivery trucks will come through the village, and some, the employees going to and fro work, if the facility does give its approvals, are going to come through the village from coming, to some extent, so, and that's a major concern, and we've all heard, and it's because of run on deaf ears, so.
So, well, we can offer technical assistance in the short run, I'll give you a parallel. We have a corridor of concern, because it's already congested, is the Route seventeen-M-six corridor between Goshen and New Hampton, Middletown. We've got some significant proposals there, the county's got some assets there, the prison, nine-one-one facility, we've got pipes in the ground there, we've got the Heritage Trail, so there's been some issues, and any given day frankly, it's, you can look at, if you look at your Google Maps or whatever, and the corridor's red at four o'clock. So we've actually agreed to facilitate a meeting with the village and town of Goshen, the town of Wayrianda, and today, City Middletown hasn't been participating with our staff and DOT. In this case, it's actually, we have an existing regional study going on, so I have a consultant group available to assist with that, but we've had a kickoff meeting to kind of lay on the table what's known, what people are concerned about, and where we might go from that, so we, and we did some preliminary research. So we could do something similar here, quickly, which is basically with, for the mayor and your peers, set up, define what kind of meeting there could be, have a group meeting, bring in what's known, so we could explain to people, get everybody up to the traffic counts and known congestion, known projects that are in play, get it on the same base in terms of shared knowledge, and then talk about next steps. Anything to find money, find a professional, will take a little time. This transportation council, which again, my, we staff, has set aside some plant, transportation planning money, in, through a process, but we haven't procured a professional yet, as we call it, we haven't hired anybody. And if anyone's been at the thrill of being involved in government funding, as these people have, hiring people takes a little time, it, you have to do it competitively.
Can you get us, composite of that, how that's structured with the town and village of Goshen, maybe we can model our committees?
Right, right. So town and village, right, the town and village of Goshen was already, by just coincidence, we have been doing a series of regional studies, what we call land use and transportation studies. We've never looked at the western part of the county, Goshen West, and so we had already positioned funds and had hired a consulting firm to work with my staff, and the municipalities from Goshen West, to look at their land use and transportation needs, and it just started when early on this corridor congestion issue popped up, and you've heard about Amy's Kitchen, for example, and other projects, what, what are we gonna do if all these things break at the same time, and the routes are already congested? Knowing in that case, that there's no improvements anywhere on the horizon that's been positioned to be made by anybody in that corridor right now. There's, DOT has nothing, for example, as a state-controlled road, so we wanted to look at what we can do quickly that might make a difference there. So that was coincidental. We don't have any current regional study that involves Montgomery here, so we have to position some special money, which is doable, but I'm proposing, we just have this sort of conversation first, that we could.
Yeah, let's have the conversation, because the town is, the district is a big alliance right now, we'll wait till the dust settles after November, because we don't know what the composite's gonna be at the board.
Right.
But we can start gearing up from our end, of who we want to get on this committee, and start having a conversation, maybe there's alternative routes around the village for some commercial traffic, I don't know, I mean, that, you know, I mean, this has all come to a head because two ma, you know, one point plus million square foot facilities at the same time.
Right.
In the planning process, and that's, I mean, we never got, I don't, I can't remember ever getting complaints about any facilities on County ninety-nine, Village of Montgomery. We do get truck traffic from FedEx, I'm told, and do it best, but when those, when those projects were being built, we really didn't get any complaints from Village of Montgomery.
Yeah, yeah.
All these years, but now with two major, one is much closer to the village, Medline, it's concerned, and the size and the effects of it, so whatever we can do to try to mitigate that with traffic through this committee, or through funds to help us, we've been having a conversation here over there, Randy's been talking to Medline about possible impact fees if it goes through, which is good.
Right, right, now you could, I mean, my staff, what we're doing in the, in the Goshen, Wayrianda case, is we're, I'm having staff gather what's already known. We did, just off, just in a quick look, prep for this, the known documented congestion in the village is two-eleven and seventeen K, that's on the record, that's, and traffic's growing there. Ironically, they're based on traffic counts, which are imperfect at this point, and I can share a map of where traffic counts have been made, and in and near the village. You've actually relatively stable or declining in terms of traffic, except, with the exception of down near downtown and the T intersection, that's, that's already what we call congested. We use terms like level of service, and if you look at Medline and other reports, you'll see that there's a, there's a grading system called level of service, that's, you know, like a school grade, A through F, just like A through F, F is failing, it's, it's about how much time you have to stay at the intersection to get through it. If you have to, if you have to wait at an intersection and watch the light change once, twice, more, your grade of that intersection goes down. And there are communities that want no development to drop below what's called Level C service, which probably typically an intersection like that would mean you never see the light change more than once, without having to get through it. City of Saratoga Springs, for example, doesn't allow any development to get final approval, unless they can prove that they're not gonna drop any of the level of service, as we call it, in any intersection in that community below C.
Even on a state road?
Correct, correct.
Broadway's on, is it a state road?
Broadway's state road, it's a good question. The main dragon, Saratoga Springs is.
Because it takes, on Saturday night after, after races, you're putting.
Probably, now the issue that the mayor raised is that what can you do about it? Because it's a state road, not much without the state's permission. In fact, you can't do much on a lot of roads without the state permission, so it's, you have to preposition things.
And then disprove it.
Yeah, anyways, go ahead.
I got a question, David, I know we're limited on, we can do a state road here.
Right.
But it's no secret that a lot of trucks go down here to avoid being checked on eighty-four, to walk into a station at it.
Right.
We can control the speed, right? We had thirty miles an hour here, what if we made the truck speed even slower? Can we do that?
Variable speed, I've never heard of.
I've seen it.
Most places.
Most places, I mean, I don't.
I mean, if we made it twenty miles an hour, their trucks.
We can't, Mike, we cannot do that, the state has to approve that we do that.
So we ask them.
You can, oh, yeah, well, look how long it took them to go forty-five to fifty, from fifty-five to forty-five before you'd be going to the village, so we try it.
I mean, you could see on, on, on a lot of roads, I've seen, you know, trucks go misspeed.
Yeah, but there's also state law, that highway law that controls the speed limits, and the lowest you can get down to is twenty, and that's for a school zone, and so there's a whole issue there where.
I'd like to look into it, I mean, they say trucks are going to.
There's no harm in asking, I'm just saying with that, but the state controls everything, they would have to say to you, okay, we'll lower it to twenty-five or twenty.
We can do that, right? We can just.
Well, you have to request, there's a lot of frustration in these requests.
Can you make a motion to request that? I mean, at least it's something, it doesn't cost anything.
All right, you want to make a motion, make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Somebody second, all in favor?
Aye.
What's the request, there's a couple of summaries.
We'll send a letter of request, but, okay.
The time involved in making the request. I don't, I'm not, I'm not personally familiar with a variable speed, depending on the type of vehicle, that sounds unusual to me, I'd have to research that to find out. The more common approach with truck travel management is weight limits. There was just, before I was here, I think it was even a sixty-minute story, right, of the, when the National Park Service clamped down on the two-oh-nine traffic, federal two-oh-nine, comes out of Port service, goes through Milford, North of Milford, they shut down truck movement through the new national park, and everybody shifted, I remember whoever was, I'm dating myself, I'm really safer or something, standing in an intersection in Milford watching one truck after another go through the historic village. That's why there are all those truck weight limits on ninety-four and Route six, you see those signs on seventeen? That all happened because it was trying, it was bipat, all truck movement in and out of New Jersey, and to some degree Pennsylvania, was pushed out of the two-oh-nine corridor with, with federal park service rules, and went on these other roads. So weight limits are the typical thing, but again, I'm not representing, that's gonna be easy either, I, because you have to get state permission. But I'm just noting, the known congestion is right down here, at this intersection. The others are no worse than B, under our current records, which is not bad. You have geometry issues.
We're talking about our side spaces.
Other intersections, we look mostly at intersections.
In the village.
Yeah, where, intersections is what transportation, traffic's mostly measured at, where, where potential conflict can happen, where you have to make turns. You've got geometry issues, I mean, anecdotally, we came through the other day, and you had the hay dealer, had two trucks, tractor-trailers come out at the same time, both wanted to turn, left on two-eleven from four-sixteen, and the one truck trying to make the turn block all of movement, and the other one was backed up waiting, and it was a little busy. So you have that kind of congestion, which we call incidental, it's, it's not regular, it just happened because of the coincidence of two tractor-trailers right after each other, trying to make a left-hand turn, which is.
There is a plan for the intersection, or four-sixteen, or two-eleven, what is, what's the timeframe on that? You know, it's not in the near future for Development Central for the light.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look. But, so we could, we could quickly pull together what's known, convene a meeting, work with you to decide who ought to be there, discuss whether you wanted, you know, public, semi-public, or private discussion. The, initially, the Wayrianda, Goshen's, Middletown corridor discussion, we decided to hold as private, just so we can have an open conversation about some things that are pending development projects, and financial commitments, but I'm a transparent person, so if you wanted to make it public, that'd be fine with me, we just have to figure out how to manage that kind of meeting, but that may be the first step, and then we could position money, if you wanted, if you need to go further. My staff seem to think there's a fair amount of documentation out there already, between the impact statements of the projects that have been done, and traffic counts that are known, and some regional studies that have been done, we could, we know a fair amount already. What, what I think the issue is, which again, I'll go back to Greater Montgomery, is that what we call this cumulative impact, that who's looking at everything that's happening, and how it might impact. That's been the challenge with the development review process, and the SEACR process, the environmental review process, is that, you know, applicants are motivated, they want to get the project approved, right, they're, they want to get a, they want to get the yes. I, so they'll, you know, they'll. I, so they'll, you know, they'll, they're focused on their project and then whatever you demand of them. But well, groups, groups like my departments try to step back and look at the larger setting. So we could try to do that. We've already documented, particularly in the, for the town of Montgomery, because of a concern about water, particularly this set of projects that was upstream involved as well. We did document a fairly significant simultaneous set of development proposals in the greater Montgomery area. In this case, we looked at what we call watersheds. We didn't isolate ourselves as a town. So the sum total of that is something we might be able to look at. But again, anything that's sort of instant gratification, you know, like you wanna, you want an answer this year, we're gonna have to rely on existing data. And I can leave you where the locations where we have existing traffic counts from. Doing any new traffic counts, you know, takes time. We have to find the money, get the, get the people out there to do it. Our county DPW does do some traffic counts. My department uses them as transportation aid. We have had bot counters for the Public Works Department, as the mayor knows, because of his other half, the, our Public Works Department is pretty busy sometimes. So I can't call them up today and ask them to go out do a traffic count out at a, at a new intersection by Friday. You know, it's gonna, I'm gonna have to preposition that. So, but those are things we can do with the benefit of time. So that's the sequence, is kind of, you know, we could do some free, we can do some free quicker technical assistance using, gathering what data and information we have. If we need some new research done, or we wanna do a deeper dive into this kind of analysis, we're gonna have to figure that out quick and then position some funding, and it's probably early next year.
Did you say that the OCTC did give money to the, for the seventeen M corridor study?
That was a prepositioned study we, that they signed off on. We're proposing to have a, for like a better term, a grant program where places like Montgomery can come and say, I wanna do a special study. Can you fund it? We just haven't quite positioned that yet. We need to take the vote of the council members. They're gonna be again in December. So right now, I couldn't tell you there's money for a study focused on Montgomery through county aid, matched with federal and state aid until early December when that vote happens. But there's a, there's a clear intention that we'll have money available. So before
Maybe express our interest in that, some funding.
Okay, sure.
And we can try to
So before December, it's, how can my staff help?
Right.
Okay?
Then we can try to
Working with DPW.
And, and, you know, let us know the composite of the committee and some other recommendations in the, in the meantime.
Okay.
I really appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, no problem. I'll leave you with, let's see here. Some of this stuff is, where's the, here's the traffic count locations and there's the actual counts, okay? That we were able to get kind of quickly. Sorry about that, we need more subjects. He'll give you one. I don't know how many we made, but feel free to distribute them. Okay, and else, sir?
No, thank you for coming in and we'll be
No problem.
Talking further, definitely, and whatever we can do to help the situation that we're about to
Have a good evening.
Okay, you too, sir.
Okay, I do think we resolved your airport zones zoning map.
Oh, thank goodness.
Did you get it yet?
No.
Okay. You should be fairly soon getting, as best as we can do, the airport safety zones on your zoning map, okay?
Thank you, David.
And next up, we have Tom and Jen. I put David first, he was on the schedule before you got on. But we did move up, you can give us a synopsis of what happened, all the good stuff.
All right, so, camp season this year was probably one of the better, probably our best as far as attendance. Jen is gonna go over the one big new addition with the online program that we went to, which was fantastic. Can't say enough about it. But the attendance, without reading it, a few people have all this stuff. We average almost over two hundred kids a week through the whole camp. And then the calendar, we had all our normal programs. We had sheriff's canines come in, the early response, fire department, all the rest. The one big change, we had Bounce Arena that we were using for the inflatables and the water slides. They went out of business the week before camp. But A and T House of Bounce, right in Walden, bought them all out. They came in and that worked out fine. We had our annual carnival on the second of August, which was probably one of the biggest turnouts we've had in
The seventeen years?
Yep.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, that we've been doing it. And just on another, before I turn it over, it's, this camp season was a kind of rough start for me and everything else. And the two young ladies that I have assistants were fantastic. We didn't, we didn't, so a big thank you
I know you guys are all bouncing off each other.
You know, it's, I had to miss a couple of days in there and nothing changed. They did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Tom.
You have it.
Before you, did you have any extra funds this year?
We're still finalizing
We're, we're still finalizing.
Because I know you've been chomping at the bit for the last few years to get a storage facility. My only argument is I don't want anything aesthetically that looks like crap down there.
No, we definitely wanna talk to you about
And we looked at that thing from Whining Hills, but it would, it looked like a cargo
Not, not a storage, I, I, I kind of, the foot locker that we were renting, the store, I kind of talked to them. They, they could make us, say, the size of a single garage that would match the building color, trim.
That would apartment, or we have some extra money from summer.
And then I, I, that
That's the thought, you know, that's what we did with Montgomery Little League with their building.
He was even talking about putting it behind like the batting, that batting cage in the corner.
The batting cage, where it'd be totally out of, the, the only reason, and this reflects nothing with, but where we're storing it now. I had a, I, I don't know what happened, but the garage over there, we, we threw out maybe twenty-five percent of the stuff. That it, it was just, I don't know what happened to
Or maybe even like one of those grave, woodworking sheds that we could bring there and move it over after the season to the, behind the DPW.
Yeah.
And it just looks like that.
I didn't bring that, I'm gonna put that in the budget and, you know, see
If we had money in a little apartment, we could do that. But something that looks nice like that.
Strictly
Easier for you guys.
Yeah.
Just easy, like to lock it up and use it on a regular basis.
We're amenable to that, you know, it's just, we did it with Little League and we can certainly do, I mean, we built the civilian, which is mostly the best summer.
Right. We got numerous with the new bathrooms, every, that, that was fantastic.
Well, the Little League bathrooms too, right?
We use that
We could do a little bit of the time.
We use that new online service this year where they did signups. We did a survey on it, everybody wants it again next year, so we're gonna do it again. It allows money to get passed through. David has like one day a week we have a drop, so I can see what goes in, what goes out. If, you know, something doesn't pass, it'll pass a couple of days later. So I think that really helped with our attendance this year because we could actually monitor it a lot closer. People were switching weeks and it was going through, it was just too much. So now the only thing goes through is through the one email system. So it has to be approved. They, I send them an email and say, are you sure you want this? They say yes, and then I go through with it on the program. They get an email from the program, they have to accept the charge. So I just put it through, they have to accept it, and then I see when it's paid for and it's moved forward from there. So this was year thirty for me. I've been going here since I was five. So you do math. My parents put me in it at half day and it's grown tremendously into full day. I think we, I think, you know, we do a really nice job. I think the kids keep coming back. I see them in school, they keep talking, that's the camp lady. So I think it's going well. We had a little scare this year. Happened last year with, you know, there's just a lot of allergies and things. We had a little boy choke on a grape this year. Never lost consciousness in God, but it was lodged in, in a particular place where I rode the ambulance with him. Michelle followed behind and parent met us there. It, outcome was great, but that's because we have really good staff. Our counselor caught it. But it just looked like he was coughing. He never turned blue, he never lost any consciousness or anything. But that little lodge right here, they were ready to send him to Westchester if he didn't throw it up. So where the mother brought us, eat this bakery, donuts, and she was wonderful. She was, you know, and she, you know, thanked us very much. But that's because we have really good staff that's trained very well and goes through intensive training to make sure that we can locate those issues before anything were to happen. So when I met the mom in the hospital, the first thing I said is, he never lost consciousness, he never turned blue. We're just here to make sure and, and everything worked out well. So
Great. Thank you for all you guys doing. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Shields, who always
She's always on the speed dial.
Advises, it is the best program I've done, I think. We're very proud of what you guys do and that's why we support it.
Thank you.
You've done some good work and we'll work on that storage.
We appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Let's go to reports before we go to Factory Street, if that's okay. All right, Chief, what do you have? I got your written report.
Yes, in terms of public safety during Montgomery Day, it was a great success again this year. We allowed three medical calls, three lost property reports, two intoxicated subjects who we made sure got home safely. And one criminal report that involved a cruelty day animal destination. Again, I'll be doing official thank yous to the agencies that assisted us that day, but we really didn't blow up the house then. Coming up this month, we have our annual firearms training, which will be done in conjunction with tasering certification. Then also this Thursday, I'll be attending the month, the Chiefs Association meeting. At this month's meeting, DA's office will be highlighting the coming changes to bail reform and discovery changes.
Which are horrible.
Uh, yeah. These changes are really gonna cause us to reinvent the way we exchange paperwork with the DA's office. The time limits that we have to notify the defense attorneys and what we have to provide them. And there are potential financial impacts to small villages and small jurisdictions.
Crime is gonna be, it's gonna have a huge effect on crime.
Yeah.
Really gives the criminals a lot more rights and you're gonna see a lot more of them on the streets, unfortunately.
So after that presentation, I'll, I'll write up a summary, provide what are the changes and any anticipated financial impacts.
Kevin, you should apply for that too. I've met with the DA a few times, I think it's just, he's asked for more personnel, but we can give him the
Well, he's got the most work to do, that's the unfortunate.
Yeah. It'll be seven day a week, that's where he should
Yeah. Well, that's all I have for this one.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Buddy?
As you're aware, the generator sewer plant, we're still having issues with it. So I do have three quotes for the generator. And I would like to get that approved as soon as possible. It's a twelve week lead time for the generator.
Thirty-three thousand one ninety from Kinsey Power Systems?
Actually, it'll be thirty-two thousand three hundred and five dollars. The update is proposed today, it's a couple of things I didn't mean on it. But the part that was installed out of a month ago, who knows how long it's gonna sit on the shelf or he failed within an hour. So now I have another rental sitting there, we're back up right now.
All right, motion to approve that at thirty-two, three oh five.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried.
And also, the sewer plant roof, got three
Three bits, Lois was Mesco at fifteen thousand two eighty-seven seventy-eight. Motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. That comes out of the sewer fund, right?
Yeah, that's that, that's a band that Kevin's been working on, it's the V A N. Yep, V A N. So both of those will be covered by that.
It'll be paid up, paid back out of the sewer fund.
Yeah, it'll be paid back in the sewer fund.
All right.
Yep. Other than that, we're just trying to get caught up on some of our blacktop and finished up Tracy Farmichael's drainage. Got the blacktop finished and that's all wrapped up. I'm sure she wrote a, wrote a letter to the board, we've got to read it or not. Um, yeah, I think that's hydrogen flushing coming up October twenty-first, November first. We shouldn't have a problem.
Are you gonna work with Bruce on the, we're working on the DASNY grant for the roof from the village hall? And just work with Bruce on checking, checking the structural. We need to solidify the, the rafters, okay?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to
Because it is heavy, we're gonna have to go with three-quarter plywood and the shingles, or the plastic roof coating, roofing rather, is pretty heavy. Okay?
Yep, good.
All right. Good, nicely did that done this fall, but leather might be
Well, the roof?
Yeah, might be tight. But at least if we have the money, we'll be ready to build a spring. No problem, I don't want to undo pressure. Okay? Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, let's go, uh, let's go to Factory Street. Kevin, what do you
I spoke to Buddy today and he said he spoke to the chief and they both agreed that we should amend our law to prohibit parking on both sides of factories in the entire land. So I prepared a local law, we need to look at, and we need to introduce a clinical can instead of public hearing against we have been until December fourth.
Okay, we have a work session at six thirty at the next meeting, right?
Right. So I don't know how you want to schedule.
Oh, this will be November fourth, then, which would be on Monday night. Okay.
Right, we also have that, also at six thirty, you have the
Right, on November fourth. Okay, should we set this, it's, we're gonna be able to finish the work session, you think, in an hour, Kevin? On the master plan? Kevin, we can always have subsequent meetings.
Right.
All right, so let's set this at seven, I don't think it's gonna be, seven fifteen or anything, right?
Will you? Sure.
Yeah, we can always run the, well, no, actually, seven, yeah, let's do it at seven thirty. And start us to do it right at the beginning of the
Regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll do, before we start the regular meeting. Okay, motions, you have this public hearing on introductory local law one of nineteen at seven thirty on November fourth. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Okay, so the entire length then, that's what all three recommend?
That's really what the
They're not really parking on the street for the schools anyway, are they?
There's, there's one or two there.
Yeah, not much. They use it to buy their parking lots.
Yeah, it's more of a drop off hand.
Okay. All right, that's done and we already changed the meeting to November fourth, didn't we, at six thirty, once again? I thought we did.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we'll use November fourth, the work session on the master plan. Okay, you have me, anything to say on that, in that regard, Kevin?
No, we'll be prepared to go over all the recommendations and the short-term, long-term goals.
If you don't finish quickly.
Right.
Before I forget, I just talked to Buddy about that warehouse proposal. Just, my concern is make sure that, that those overhead doors are facing the airport in that direction, not the Weaver Street residence.
They are.
They are.
The two hundred thousand square foot ones, yeah.
Or any warehouse, the ninety thousand or the two hundred thousand, right?
And then the office buildings that they also proposed up and closer to the residence.
Closer to the residence?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's where the old, that's where they proposed the senior housing. Now they put two up in the building.
Well, I mean, you can govern the, the buffer too, with evergreen trees and so on and so forth. You can, you can be realistic with that.
Yeah.
I mean, the more
I don't even recall what the setback is.
If they're gonna, if they're gonna go right to the property line as much as they can, then you're gonna need more of a buffer, so whatever you can do, because that's gonna be a concern. Okay, where are we? All right, well, the information, the village hall is closed October fourteenth for Columbus Day and yard sale day is October twelfth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, right, because the, October fifteenth meeting is November fourth. No.
You canceled the October fifteenth and moved to November fourth.
Okay. Yeah, I'm losing it. I thought we, yeah.
That's the, that's the public hearing for Medline in any town.
Right, I know that, we did that, but we're canceling the meeting altogether?
No.
No, I don't
I didn't think we were canceling the meeting, that's where my confusion is. I thought we were just changing the, the first meeting in November.
First meeting in November, we changed to
But we're still having the October fifteenth meeting.
Yeah.
We're just not, Don asked that we not have the work session on the master plan that
Yeah, we're still having
We're gonna have like
Having our meeting
Right, everybody else does that way except you and Muncie, I think.
Wow.
Right, that's why when you sent me that, I said, I don't remember, we didn't, we never said we were gonna cancel the meeting. We just said we were gonna change the, the work session. Right, so we're still gonna have the October fifteenth.
So you wanna, you wanna change
We don't cancel We don't cancel.
The fifteenth then?
For the, for Factory Street, I don't think, let's leave that on, oh, yeah, we can leave that at seven thirty. Right, but let's still have the October fifteenth meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so for clarity, in case we, we did, I don't think we made the motion that way, but do you wanna correct it now? For the record?
I, I have to correct it.
Okay. We'll make a motion, first a motion to resume the meeting to be held on October fifteenth at regular hours. Motion?
I'll make it second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. The November fourth meeting, we already did.
We did that, yes.
Right, work sessions at six-thirty.
Six-thirty, yeah, right.
Okay. Good. All right, uh, approved Deputy Treasurer to carry over fifty-nine point seven-five hours of vacation time passed. Her anniversary date, October seventh, to be used January thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Motion to approve that?
I'll make it second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. Adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for funding from the state of New York, Unified Court System through the Justice Court Assistance Program and enter into, and execute, excuse me, program agreement for such financial assistance. Motion to approve that as requested by the court clerk?
I'll make that.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. Hybrid flushing October twenty-first to November first, between the hours of seven AM and four PM. I think that was in the newsletter, but can we do a code red on that too?
Yep, you will.
And then we have our usual events. This Sunday, or Saturday, by the way, is the Jimster concert from four to six. Yard sale day, I said. Taste of Montgomery, we said earlier, October twentieth, November fourth, in the municipal parking lot. No tents, um, in that blacktop, though, right?
No, they moved it. It's gonna be in between the two museums on Front Street.
Oh, it is? Okay. Good.
Yeah, well, there's a little bit of issue with that, so we gotta talk to Walt about that.
Yeah, why is it, let's see.
Well, myself and the chief, depends on how long the tents are. It's, it's on some.
In the middle of the street?
The middle of the street. Are they gonna come set it up someday and take it down someday? If not, it's left overnight.
We have no way of.
We have no way of protecting that street at night.
Yeah, that could be problematic. I mean, I think we should move it down here, but would they advertise it on the postcards, I saw?
Well, if it's there.
I mean, we have a meeting on fifteen, but let's, yeah, let's, let's suggest that they don't do it in the middle of the street.
But they can put the tent up on Sunday morning and take it down Sunday night. I mean, I don't know, probably, probably they'll do that, but if it's left overnight, that's, that's gonna be.
An issue.
All right, Walt's out of town right now, but maybe just call him and invite him.
I have a message in with Walt.
Okay, yeah, let's work that out. Instead of, if they can do it there, it's gonna be done that, that day at those hours.
Yeah, well, during daylight hour, yeah, it could be up and down.
Good, okay, anything else? Okay.
We, we do need to call executive on it.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Okay, uh, public portion? Randy and Tom?
I just wanted to check in and see where the water, what, what.
I signed it, um, it looked, it looked great to me, but Kevin drafted up. And I met your crew.
I didn't see it yet.
Oh, you didn't?
I haven't, okay.
All right, you wanna look it over and see if you have any questions? Do you have a copy of it here?
Yes.
Do you have a copy? We'll go to Tom while Randy's looking at it.
Yeah, sure. First, uh, some good news, uh, Buddy?
Yes.
Uh, I pulled my filters. They're white.
Really?
That's good, good job on that.
Until I get better on my flush.
Yeah, right. So the, the first original one I told you was brown.
But since that, that time, it's a, I guess it's a little old turd again.
Good.
Well, it's gonna get better. It's a little bouncy there, but no. Yeah, there's actually, coming out of the, the well now is, is below a ten. That's a little, we can sample the ten, so it's below a ten, so they consider that a zero, because it's below the.
Yeah.
Recording limit.
Yeah, so I told him on Sunday and, uh, I was surprised.
Good, good, nice.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the situation. Hands forward, huh?
This is what, this is what everybody's gonna have to get into. Everybody's going into these, these filter systems, whether it's South Booming Grove, Town Windsor, they're all going this way. So depending on what you got. So right now, we're actually, um, we're pumping out the bedrock well that we drilled ten years ago, because it's got hydrogen sulfide in it. This filter will take out hydrogen sulfide, so installing the filter, we should be able to to take a well that we couldn't use and hopefully be using it in future.
So that's gonna help our water situation and maybe save us money in the long run on that end. I mean, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost us a lot of money for this system, but
Yeah.
if, if we save a little bit on the other end, that's.
Like I said, when I, when I got the figure from Dave and where, where we are under right now, I mean, I've gotta buy one more pump yet for the, for the backwash and I can probably wrap it up and close out of town, huh?
What about the park wells?
Yeah, I gotta redo that park well. They're, they're bad, they're, they're bad shape.
Sulfur, iron manganese?
Yeah, it's iron, it's an iron problem there, but then we lost production on number two. It's basically not pumping anything, so we shut that down. Um, we have another one on that, because you know how dry it is. And, um.
But if this helps you with the other wells, that might offset.
Uh, yes, the problem is, you know, the filter is so far out the other end of town and you gotta keep a corn residual up here. Remember the whole discussion with the, with county, you know, wanting water, trying to keep pouring residual there. For me to keep chlorine out of Factory Street from Weaver Street, there's a lot of mile to fight to go through. So that's, that's why we need park well on.
I think it looked good.
Yeah.
Yeah, something good. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I'm really happy, Buddy. That's a really good job.
Good.
Uh, the warehouse undone by the airport, uh, nothing to be done?
Steve, perhaps?
Yeah, I saw that. It's, it's, it's not what I think we want in our village.
No. No, it definitely, uh, the grass is overgrown there, so. And you mentioned that to Bruce, I meant to call him today on that, because I did see it two days ago. I hadn't really looked for it before that, I just noticed it, and so. Let's ask him to give them a letter.
And my final thing is, uh, with David Church being here, I'm really happy that you guys brought him in here. I mean, uh, I think he said a lot of great things. So the thing that I got from it is that, you know, you guys wanna start to set up a committee. And if at all possible, um, I hope that, first, I like the tone that the board presented to them. All right? That there is an urgency to get these things done and everything on board. I think it's important that, uh, this committee is set up in an expedient manner. But with that being said, the two warehouses, Steve, that you referred to, are looming. They're right on our back door right now. And I'm just wondering. To the town planning board, let them know what your plans are with, uh, the county. And to perhaps get the, the town planning board or members of the town involved in this committee. So what's the point of doing this if these buildings get built? You know, I mean, if we could have, uh, some sort of committee that's active and right away and get the town involved in it, because it, you know, as you guys have said many times, it's a town issue. But my point to you guys, I'm really happy your tone has changed because it is also a village issue in my view. Mike, keep pursuing what you're doing. Uh, these whole things with this state road, we've talked about this here, I've talked about it here for months. Uh, getting signage, going to the DOT, doing whatever we can to prohibit or slow down the movement of traffic through this, uh, this, uh, village.
Well, unlike others who may be going into Carolinas and stuff like that, I'm staying here. I may be a snowboarder, but I'm staying here. These two girls, one of them just left, my daughters, they bought houses in this village. One bought a ghost house and fixed it up, the other one just moved into the village. My grandchildren live here, so I have investment here, so I don't want this place to fall apart. I moved up from the Bronx. They gonna be Eddie Albert from Green Acres, so what? I drive a tractor on the tractor day, big deal. This is where I'm staying. So I'm very concerned about it too, just like the rest of the board is. We just gotta be very careful what we say. We gotta be very careful, because when you hold a seat like this, a little of this and you think, I think a lot. And he came here and he offered information, if I can put up a sign, we can put up a sign on that street and slow people down. The stop signs here on Goodwill Road. There might be a pain in the neck, oh jeez, we gotta stop, we gotta stop. Before we moved in, two weeks before we moved in, a six-year-old boy was killed on a bicycle there. You guys know? There was not a stop sign from two oh eight to the railroad tracks. The speed limit was fifty, past Hepburn's Farm, then it turned thirty coming into Goodwill Road. Who really slows down to thirty miles an hour, really? Put the stop sign on Roosevelt, put the stop sign on Tompkins, put the stop sign on Chandler. A comment was made, goes, oh jeez, why you go that way? I'm gonna go the other way. Hopefully miss the eighteen wheel, things the same way.
All keep pursuing it.
Can I just add something? Chief, you and I spoke a while ago about the, um, workshops that the DOT holds. I believe about you, um, sort of making money, if I can put it so broadly, on commercial traffic. Were you spoke to about that?
The check one on eighty-four?
No, 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 I, I, I understand, I heard this from, uh, truckers also, that the DOT, um, 'cause I, I think we can't prohibit it, but I think we can discourage it. We can do things that will.
So we, we're still investigating, sending some of our guys to DOT training.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, it's just hard to find. The police academy has been, no assistance, honestly. Um, my next step is to reach out to DOT directly, but that may require some, you know, way out of county training, officers staying up at the, uh, at some local hotels for over a week. But we could get them certified and then they could work with DOT, but it would also take some investment in some portable scales.
We might get a little bit of turn on investment there.
Also checking with the chiefs when you meet with the chiefs of some fashion too, so.
Yes, Steve, can, can the village suggest to the state that they limit the amount of weight of these track trailers that go through the village? Because the, the historic, you know, homes, right, I mean, right here, they have all these historic homes. Is there any way that the board can proposition Albany to say, we don't want these forty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand pound trucks, tandem trucks, coming down to eleven, making a left or right on seventeen K? It might be three or four day right now. Who's to know what it's gonna be like in a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now?
Our, our last meeting, we, we were, we got up neighborhood at a sign that said nothing over forty thousand, um, pounds going through there. I passed through there and I've seen that they've taken it down. So Kevin was checking into that. I don't know how much, how much leeway we have. I can tell you this, I was a policeman in Newburgh for over twenty-three years and South Street, which is fifty-two, we were very limited on what we could do with that. With open the side parking, with summonses, we really had our hands tied, you know, South Street going right down to the river. Steve would know better here and this, and but, but, um, I have been in many communities and we work campuses, we drive all over the place, and I've seen, I've been to municipalities where it says trucks this speed, vehicles this speed. You know, you go through the school, the school area here, can we put speed bumps there? I don't know. I'm willing to go through an extra pair of shocks every couple of years to slow down the flow of traffic, whatever it takes. Again, the stop sign on Roosevelt there, that was the board, that wasn't just me, it was the board that, that did that, but it slows traffic down.
Well, that's okay sometimes. You can slow it down or make it go around.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Legally, we can, yeah. There's not much we can do about it, unfortunately.
Again, you can petition, as you know, how, how many times you petitioned DOT to slow it down coming from Middletown into the village? How many times you petitioned for a traffic light?
We did lower the speed limit. We lowered the speed limit on two eleven.
I, I still can't believe they had all the light in front of the school over here. My wife's driven a school bus here for fifteen years, he coming on for seventeen K there. Are you kidding me? Kids, school bus, ah, we have a little blinking light when you go across the, until God forbid somebody killed, then everybody's gonna come out. I was the only group that put the, uh, the, uh, light in front of East Colmanham. I was, I was just pretty much a gulf, it was another guy, a random little thing. That was, that was, that was really unbelievable to get that through there, for East Colmanham there. So.
Well, if the board or anyone has a proposition to Albany yet for a weight limit restriction, it's gotta start someplace. If you have to send ten letters, you gotta start.
Yeah. You have to.
We could definitely ask.
Well, yeah, you can start. I think you have to go through the county and you, you send the letter to the county and then the county sends it to the state and and they, then they study it. And then the studies take, the studies take, whatever how the limit takes, takes the studies and then they send them out and say, sorry, no, or they just stay there.
If you wanna start a petition and present us, you're certainly welcome to do that. Pass a resolution in support of it and send it on to, I got you.
Hi.
Randy was first, um, then.
Um, two things just on that also. One, I know you can't drive trucks on Huguenot Street. Is that, is there an issue, like if there's, you know, shady or, you know, not steady infrastructure with that?
That's not a, that's not a state, it's a road though.
I don't know.
You're gonna streets that, no.
So.
They might as well, you know, have a, a story different than you told, so that's.
Well, that's me, with the, that was state five ways, that's a different story.
So ours is only an issue because of the state, how it is, how that comes through the village. Um, so I guess touching on what he said, if we get petitions together and we get everything going for it, I think the missing link is that we don't have the board's support. We feel we don't have the board's support, we feel we don't have the town's support. We feel, you know, I've spoken to Scoobest, not to throw names around, but he seems to be in support of that. Brian Marx seems to be in support of like, oh, you have to make noise, you have to keep asking, so.
Well, just let the judge, if he, if he gets petitioned.
You'll be in support of that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We just feel, we just feel like we wanna run. You know, can't sit here until I see the petition.
Right.
When I said we would probably be supported, I just said that, I just said that two minutes ago, Randy.
I know, but I'm saying I feel like the lack of communication and everybody, that's the missing piece all around here. The town, the village, the traffic, the water, all these issues, the main component, it's just a small lack of communication. If everybody worked together just a little bit more, I mean, I think it would be a lot easier.
No, I agree, we've been, I think we've been very open to suggestions and what we can do, we'll do. That's what we continue to do, yes, name, uh, you were by Music Street, right?
I do, I'm current in it, I think, um, when we came up at a couple of meetings ago, but I went in, in the context of these traffic, um, studies and traffic calming devices, I know that these are, we're talking about state roads. But one thing I'm not sure if you've noticed locally and, and regionally in New York State, the state has been installing a lot of traffic calming devices. And by that I mean traffic circles. And with all of the new developments that are going on on my side of the village down by the airport, or that are in front of the planning board at this time, I think it merits consideration of, of recommendations to the state or to the applicants that they install a traffic circle on two eleven. Because that would certainly calm traffic coming into the village. It would also effectively restrict the size of the trucks that could come through just by the geometry of the intersection.
Where are you talking about, two eleven?
Well, I'm.
Four sixteen.
Four sixteen, the ware, those warehouses that they're, they're talking about, the entrance on Dunn Road. Anywhere that you've got a applicant that's talking about doing any kind of major intersection work, or where they have to get DOT approval for a project, I think it's worth asking them and the DOT and the state to consider a traffic calming intersection. And that could be, there's a lot of different ways that they, they, islands in the middle of the road, you know, a traffic circle, any kind of, there's a lot of different geometries that you can put in as part of an intersection that, and traffic circles right now, I mentioned that just because that seems to be the most popular with New York State. I know that a lot of people are very, um, a- against traffic circles because it's not a traffic flow that a lot of us grew up using and, and we feel uncomfortable with it. Believe me when I say that a lot of, a lot of big truck drivers are uncomfortable with those traffic circles also. I was actually behind a truck that was trying to get around some traffic on seventeen at the, um, the Harriman construction. And he ended up just kind of plowing right over the top of the traffic circle because his truck could not go through it necessarily.
Well, roundabout, you know, I don't know. I mean, you know, we certainly want to limit traffic, but we don't want to cut all traffic trail, trail.
No, of course not, of course not.
And you might be doing that to a certain, there is some farmers that ask to get.
But what I'm saying though is, is that it creates a condition where they might think twice, just like you were saying, like they might think twice about actually taking that road because they don't wanna bother with it. I mean, truckers talk to each other, I'm friends with truckers, like they know which roads they wanna take, they know which roads they don't wanna take. And if you're able to sell some kinds of these, and they're, they're called traffic calming devices because they're supposed to slow traffic down. They slow traffic down physically, like mechanically in a way that a sign doesn't do. So that's, you know, with all of the different applications that are currently in front of the planning board of the village, I think there's a lot of opportunities to get creative, we're, we're asking the state to evaluate. And maybe David Church's group could take a look at some of that stuff as well, I'm not sure. But mostly I just wanted to raise my hand.
Yeah, I don't wanna pull it out, but I mean, there are pros and cons, but we can always look at it with the traffic stuff.
Yeah, of course.
Steve, if I might just make a closing comment on that.
The, uh, what, what bothers me a lot through this whole process that, you know, I've been involved in all this is that, what I don't understand is with this development that's happening in and around the village and the town, is that, I guess it's the state's fault, I don't know whose fault it is. There is no remedies for anything. They're just building, 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 and nobody cares about that stoplight down there. And we all know the tractor trailers can't make that. I'm just saying, why isn't the state proactive in putting all these things, things together for the infrastructure to work properly? It, it will not and does not right now work properly here in this village, uh, with the tractor trailers that do come through. So it just blows my mind that, uh, all these things aren't, uh, thought about before we get ten months into the, uh, the medline issue. This should have been done, uh, by perhaps town, village, county, state, long before this, and that's the frustrating part that I think I have and perhaps a lot of other residents.
Well, the state, the county doesn't usually look at state roads, but I mean, is it, it's typical New York State. I mean, they don't have the foresight, especially this current, um, sitting by in the senate and the assembly. I mean, they, they pass legislation that has no foresight of what it's gonna cost, with that, it's an unfunded state mandate, most of these, raise the age, um. Bail ring, uh, the, uh, bail reform, which is, is the most asinine legislation, and they're gonna, they're gonna hopefully kick that back in another year after they see what happens. Ramifications from that, everything, you know, pre tuition, um, you name it, you name it. With unfunded mandates, with no way to tell the municipalities how you can pay for it, no, no funds coming from the state, very little funds, I should say. So, for them to have foresight and infrastructure, I don't think they do that either, except, you know, maybe they build the, the Mario Cuomo Bridge. I'm just venting, but I mean, it's just, I mean, nobody here invented Village Montgomery to become as popular as it is, and one of the fastest growing places in New York State. So, you know, I mean, we've always operated on these small village streets and, and state highways through the village. I mean, they used to come through the village back in the seven, in the sixties and fifties, you know, and they used to crawl back then. I mean, it's just, it's, it'd be nice if the state could, could, uh, come up with something for, to route traffic around the village, but I don't know if it's, you know, are they gonna do it?
Well, they had, you know, years ago, as you know, they had that bridge, uh, planned for seventeen K to bypass the village and all that kinda stuff. I don't know where that's at anymore, I understand it's still somewhere out there, but, uh, I guess the frustration is, is that all this stuff. Uh, is, uh, thought about after the fact. It's never, uh, planned before we get to this point, ever. And it's very frustrating.
I don't disagree with you.
In today's MSN, they said, you know, New York State's number three, people leaving, and number three, high taxes, I think we would be by New Jersey and Connecticut. So, you know, some, somebody in Greenhaven Correctional Facility is using a computer that's more modern than my grandchildren are using in their public schools.
That's gotta change.
You know, think about it, people are doing away with the dare program, wow, do away with the dare program, but let's put money into after the overdose. Why not put it in before? Why not make sure the foundation's there for when they're tempted to use the drugs? No, we'll do it afterwards, we'll treat the problem afterwards. We can go in politics all night long, you see. And I have an eight, and that's where I mean, touch you all day.
I basically, even though I'm a resident of Maybrook, I've been a resident of the village at that intersection of two eleven and seventeen K for twenty-three years. So I've seen it, I've seen a change, it's not just three trucks, there's plenty of trucks that are coming through there. It's a safety issue, which I would think that if we took that angle towards the state as the village, doesn't that raise concerns? Because in order for a truck to make a turn there, they're on the wrong side of the road. There are also, um, there are also cars that are sitting at the line where they're supposed to be, who have to move in order to allow the trucks to go. Plus, they're going over the sidewalk. Um, just being on the wrong side of the road in order to make a turn is a concern, plus, you were talking about the weight. And, um, I, I, I also have a concern about that bridge, because it was fixed, but it was a temporary fix, I was told. And that's a lot of weight of construction trucks coming over there. Um, what's gonna happen if that bridge ends up, you know, I mean, there's no way to go over that bridge, you know, it's gonna cause a big, uh, change of events with, um, you know, cars coming through, having to go all the way around the village, but. Um, I, I was just thinking that it was like another angle to take, because it is a big safety issue, I can't even.
It's always been a safety issue, I mean, for years, that culvert was about that low, and we finally got it fixed.
Yeah.
And we had to help out quite a bit to do it, right?
The culvert, what?
Right on the corner, you know, the dip where you take the right by.
Right by pharmacy.
Where pharmacy was.
Right, but if you look at it, it's going down and down and down, and it was wonderful that it was fixed, but it's.
Back to when Joanne's family had a tireless steering wheel, it was that low, and we finally got it fixed.
Which, and now it's taken a, a hit. What's tough?
We can take any tack we want, but I just, to get the state to move, I mean, we'll, we'll send letters, we'll, we'll entertain petitions and, and so on and so forth, and.
The other thing is, um, the safety of people walking across on the crosswalk. I actually take people further down from my office where they should be, crossing, but people making right on reds, but they're not stopping, they're just coasting. And before you know it, there's gonna be somebody, yeah, anyway, there's gonna be an accident there. Um, so that's a big, big safety issue as far as I'm concerned, which getting two, one truck sitting at two eleven and another one trying to go up two eleven, uh, it's a comedy. I mean, I've had to leave my office and redirect traffic in order for a truck to back up to allow another truck to go in there. In any case, I'm just saying that it's a, it's a big safety issue, so being that I keep hearing that it's a state issue, it's a state road. We're the village, why don't we have a voice in, in that, you know, um, in taking it in a different angle, um, and making something happen, I mean, the, yeah, anyway. And it's a lot more, it's a lot more trucks, and they're also coming through fast. I mean, they're literally shaking my office, and I know they shake the, a couple of people here who live on two eleven, and they're shaking their, their houses, their foundations, Bob over there, I mean. You know, that's, that's a concern. Um, my question would be too, to the officer here, um, can we get one of those speed limit signs that tell you how fast you're going? Right in front of Devitt, like, but, right beyond Devitt.
Who cares, nobody cares about that, it costs a waste of time and money, nobody cares.
Who, who doesn't care?
We had one, we had one, it's in disrepair and it's closely to fixed.
But you can't far from another village, I see them all over the place, like Maybrook has had them down on Maybrook Road. They stole it?
What we, what we can do after listening to her concern is, if you have tractor trailers, which I know they do swing by, and most times they're going over the W L line. Or when they're going across the bridge, they're actually making the bridge on the way. That's illegal. So, um, what we could do is do some targeting enforcement, and, you know, like we talked about, someone brought it up before the truckers talk. And they say, hey, the cops, you know, don't go through there, you're gonna make left turn and get pulled over, you gotta go over the W L line. If we start doing that repeatedly, 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 maybe we'll see a change in the air.
Yeah, let's endeavor to do that.
And they're coming through in the evening as well, there's semi trucks that are coming through, um, very fast, like one o'clock in the morning, cause they figure nobody's there. But the speed that they're coming through, I mean, semi trucks making that turn at a fast, anyway.
All right, thank you, Steve, we'll certainly endeavor to do that, yes, Maria, you had a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add on to that, because that, that was what I was gonna suggest, that, um, if we start, you know, I have, I'll use the word hassling, or just stopping them. It's like you're making your, yeah, exactly, enforce the double yellow line business. Cause I think that's an issue both when you come off the bridge, and also when you certainly, when you make the turn from seventeen K to eleven and vice versa.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so again, if we make it, cause they're doing it out of, for their own convenience.
If you want videos, I've got videos.
They're not using village services, for sure, there's no place for them to park, they're not stopping, so they're doing for some other reason, so we just have to make it inconvenient.
Maybe if we make it inconvenient, the countries that we work for will yell and be mad about it too, that they can't send their trucks to here, maybe they'll do something about the roads.
Is there anything about, uh, the village police manning that corner over there and watching the trucks when they?
That's what I just mentioned, we could, uh, make it a target patrol spot.
Yeah.
And start ticketing, or maybe start up with warning and then start ticketing, and perhaps illustrate word of mouth to the truckers.
Yeah. I mean, just for them, as they do to the sidewalks, I mean, you gotta tell it ourselves, and, and the trucks just keep running over, just like the one at four sixteen, they destroyed that thing over there.
Combination of things, we'll certainly try to do that as much as we can.
It would be good if we could get a lower speed for trucks.
Well, I'll, we'll ask that too, I mean, if tractor just said request, we'll, we'll see.
Okay, anything else, we're ready to be on executive.
Yes.
While we're talking about traffic, um, I just have a concern, like there is not a weight limit for trucks on the corner of two eleven that are coming up Chandler.
What is it, what is that street, buddy?
Okay, I can, I think it's, I think Chandler should be still three ton.
Three ton, I would say.
I, there's no signage.
Okay, we can put signage up.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Because it would be, it would be awful, should an eighteen wheeler have to try, even attempt to try to go up Chandler.
Negotiate that time.
That, that would be, that would be definitely.
They, there's an eighteen wheeler dump truck, this thing go in there working on.
On Hoover Dam.
Um, no, cross, working on that property there. So you, you can't really.
Make it a look of delivery, it's delivering furniture, you can't stop them either.
Yeah.
I mean, how do you stop somebody from delivering furniture to, to a homeowner? You couldn't.
But, but it's not, but it's not, it's not my stomach truck. You know, my stomach.
Man, it's a pretty big, pretty big truck.
I mean, you're gonna get, you're gonna get twenty foot, that truck, so you're gonna get lumber trucks, you're gonna get concrete trucks, still going. And the Village of Montgomery has on two eleven, historic homes, many of them are on, on the street almost, I mean, they're right next to it, you're gonna get houses that rattle. I grew up with that my whole life, Russian lumber going down the street alone, I mean, it's, it's, you know, that's a street that was industrial, and you're gonna have it on two eleven. I mean, I'm sorry that some people are, don't like that, but you're gonna get that to an extent, whether you have tractor trailers or just straight jobs, you're gonna have some commercial traffic. Just the, the magnitude of what we, we're getting, we don't like.
Right, but, so if the signage.
But everybody should understand, there is gonna be trucks that come through always that are gonna rattle your house.
But if the signage can help now, be in place now.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that, that's done.
It's a, it's a foresight.
If it's, if it's not done within the next week, you yell at me and I'll.
I know where to find you.
A quick note, speaking of.
I'll be gone for five days, I'm not telling you where I'm going either.
Speaking of, speaking of signage, just a, um, a suggestion, uh, I have a feeling that people are, the trucks are coming down two eleven. And they're missing the turn to go, let's say, to the warehouses or eighty-four, they're coming into Montgomery. So even if there was signage there that said eighty-four, you know, make a right here, which of course you see what the trucks are doing to the, the ditch over there. Um, but that's better than coming through the village going up, cause I, for them to come down two eleven and make a right on seventeen K, and I leave the office, sometimes I follow them, to see where they're going. And a lot of them are going out to eighty-four, but they've come down two eleven, where they could have bypassed the village by just going up.
So you're suggesting that Boyd Street?
No, no, they're coming down two eleven to four sixteen, rather than coming into the village to go to eighty-four. If they're coming from Middletown on two eleven, and they're heading into Montgomery.
Oh, okay, you're saying, right, at the triangle, make the, the right.
Make the right, cause I think their, their GPS.
Did we ever stick up the sign that Mrs. Stockberger asked, remember she asked the signs down on Charles Street?
Yeah, yeah, there was a, there was a sign, there was signs there, we caught no ones.
There were signs there already, yeah.
Steve, is there a way, I know Buddy has brought it up, and I think Joanne has brought it up in previous meetings, FedEx, where they'll take an eighteen wheeler to make a small little delivery? You, you've brought that up, and I think Joanne might have mentioned it one time. Uh, is there a way that you can send a letter to FedEx plants over here and say, hey, listen, you don't need an eighteen wheeler to deliver a little box, you know, you put it in your, uh, rural route trucks or something like that? Or they'd be subject to the fine on the weight limits on Charles or wherever, you know, on the village streets. Uh, something of that nature, because I, I see more of that happening.
Remind me of that, we'll do that, remind me of that, we can, we can try and send a letter off to Do It Best and FedEx, they're the, the main ones that violators, right?
Not the ones that's.
Not that they're after, but they're, but they're kinda, yeah, but we can certainly do that, that's easy.
Steve, you said you had guys going to DOT school?
No, we're, we're hoping to send.
One hundredth, top one hundred safest villagers in the country, and we have cops who went to DOT school who are out there right now. That would make people go another way.
I want to hand motion to go on the executive, uh, uh, turn to attorney client privilege, please.
Okay, yeah, okay.